Okay, Chair Rivera, we have a quorum. We have a quorum and we're on time with the meeting, so.
No doubt.
You want to start us?
Absolutely. All right, so I call this meeting to order. Thank you all for attending today on this beautiful Thursday mornings. The Recording Secretary will not take role.
All righty, Chair Rivera.
Here.
Board Member Sweet.
Here.
Board Member Anderson.
There.
Board Member Pace.
Here.
All right, let the record reflect that all board members are present with the exception of Board Member Renteria.
Thank you. Item two, remote participation under AB 2449, non-needed today. Item three, modifications to agenda.
Chair from staff, there are no modifications to the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Dan. Item moving on right along agenda to item four, we have public comments and this is a time when any persons may address matters not listed on this agenda, but which but but which are within the matter, the subject matter of the jurisdiction. The public may comment on agenda items. When the item is called, each speaker is allowed three minutes to any members of the public wish to make any comments or on items not listed on the agenda. See any members of the public this morning?
I don't believe any members of the public have joined via Zoom.
I think you just came. You just stopped here. He was going to attend this meeting.
Did he go that way?
I don't know, I think I'm going to answer.
Oh, yeah.
We'll give it a moment. We can give it a moment if we've got.
Morning here.
Yeah.
Are you here?
Hi.
And we're on to item four, which is public comments.
On.
On items on agenda items.
On non-agenda items, yeah.
Just sit over here, member of the public.
All right, Chair, it looks like we have no public comment on non-agenda items.
All right. They're there. Moving on to item five, approval of minutes. So we actually have two sets of minutes this morning. One from our March 27th meeting and one from our special meeting dated May 8th. Do we have any changes to the March 27 minutes? Okay, seeing that there's none, minutes are approved, submitted. And do we have any changes to the May 8th, May 8th minutes? And seeing that there's none, minutes are approved, submitted. All right, so moving on to item six, which is new business. So item 6.1, annual report and work plan. Staff at Santa Rosa Metro Chamber will present the 2024 annual report and the 2025 work plan.
Correct. Chair Rivera, today we will receive for the board's review input and feedback a final draft of the annual report and work plan. An initial draft was already brought forward to this body for input and for feedback. Some of that feedback and that input was incorporated into the final plan that you're receiving today. The purpose today is for you to give staff any other remaining feedback or insight that you may have with regards to the plan. Then later, the plan will go to the City Manager's Office for review. Once it passes the City Manager's Office and the City Attorney's Office for review, it will come back to this body one more time to motion for approval for recommendation to send the plan to City Council for adoption and ratification. So today, what I'm going to do is turn it over to our partner with Visit Santa Rosa in the chamber, to Janelle, who's going to walk us through the plan. We're not going to go through it line item by line item as we did that in more detail when we brought the initial draft to you, but it was attached to the agenda today and was made available to you as board members and the public for review in advance of this meeting. So, Janelle, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
All right.
And I can walk us through some of the slides on.
On the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. So just, just, you know, heads up that this is a little bit lengthier and it's a little different than it has been in the past. In the past, the city has taken the lead on creating the document and then Visit Santa Rosa provides, you know, our, our our data and info, but we decided to take it in-house this year and it was a fun project.
We do appreciate it very much.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, it was, I think it made more sense for us since we have a lot of marketing staff on, you know, already in-house and kudos to Liz who helped put it together. So, yeah, it looks a lot different. But most of the same data, we did include a few new things, so I'll touch on those. And then the other difference for this one is it's half of 23 and in all of 24 because at a board meeting, I believe it was at the end of 23, that this group decided to go to a calendar year and mainly because it's easier for the Chamber and Visit Santa Rosa because we're on a calendar year for our budget and we provide most of the the data. So, so the next one will be all of 25. Just, you know, the first couple pages are all pretty standard required components that we include every year. So scope overview of what the SRTBI is and how we are funded. TOT note about the increase to 11% effective November 24. Obviously, our board. And I'll start on our information. What page is this? Five, I believe. Sorry, I'm going fast because that, all the, all the beginning stuff is very
Standard.
Yeah, standard.
And 11% is noted.
Yep, it is. Yes, it is on page. Yeah, we updated that. Page four, yep. So, yeah, on page five, did you go too far? No, no, no. Page six, yes. Event support, that's something that's handled by this group. Just noting some of the events that we funded in the second half of 23, or actually all of 23 we've included here and 24. Total of, we have 113,000 listed here. I'm not adding this up in my head right now, but I believe that's, that's accurate. Any questions on any of the events here listed before I move on? I think everyone's pretty.
That triathlon, that did, that was in 2023, it did not book again?
It did not what?
It didn't, I mean, triathlon, is it? It didn't book in 2024 or 2025? That 2023, what is it? Triathlon race series? That event?
What about it? It didn't happen?
Yeah, I mean, in 2024, 2025.
I'll check on that.
Okay.
I'll check on that, yeah. Off the top of my head. But, yeah.
And Janelle, the.
This list came from the city, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if I may, Janelle, the recipients are still required to submit a recap of after the event and you are receiving those.
Yep. Yep, and, and another change that we made in the last year is instead of, because the city provides half the support and Chamber provides the other, provides the other half, instead of the Chamber sending out one check and then being reimbursed by the city, we've decided to have the, the event host send us both the recaps and then we each send out our own checks. For us, it's been a lot easier, so I appreciate that change. So, yeah.
Makes sense, yeah.
So it is in 2024?
It is.
We just gave it, yeah, I gave it a little. Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, and then on to the budget. Again, we've got July through December of 23 for VSR and the city and then showing all of 2024. Anything to note from the city? You know, we have, we do have an asterisk here for the Chamber that we, we maintain a reserve balance of 500,000 in the VSR budget, which is not used for annual expenses. And this income is combined total for advertising grants, interest, income and merchandise sales. That's the marketing, the sales marketing bucket. And something that, another change that we've made that you'll see on the next annual report is just breaking out that in more detail so that you'll see, you know, be more transparent, so you'll see exactly where those funds are going. Under marketing and sales, it's broken out now into, I don't have the list right, if I may, but I, I think I've got this pretty, pretty well. It's, it's broken out into digital marketing, print, community engagement, trade shows, fan tours and so a lot more, you know, detailed on the budget next year, which was something that was asked and I think makes sense, so. And it was an easy change for us, so anything on the city?
No, through the chair, I can just share from the city perspective that we did receive this information from our finance administration team and we scrubbed through the numbers, Raphael and I, with our admin support staff. Just a reminder for anyone in the public who may be listening to this meeting later and for board members that this is a, a look back at previous budgetary activity. It doesn't reflect the newly adopted budget by the city.
Thank you.
Next, we go on to some tourism indicators, which is something that we have included in the past. Some research from Sonoma County Tourism, just showing the trends in the last five years, obviously showing dips in 2022 due to COVID. And then ADR peaking in 2021 and then we've seen it slightly drop in the last after that and then increase again and then we're back down again for that now that I'm not, I'm not talking about 2025 right now, so. Same with hotel occupancy and air travel. And then the next few graphs just kind of show the same thing, just in different, different ways. Also, some more data on page 11 from Sonoma County Tourism. It's that they get from Dean Runyon Associates showing how we relate, how we compare to the other cities in Sonoma County. Obviously, the highest spending. Page 12 is just a recap on all of that. And 13. 14. On the page 15, just some internal milestones and projects that Visit Santa Rosa worked on. We saw 5.75 billion press pickups, 776,000 website views, which was an increase of a hundred and, over 100%, and that was due to the new website being launched early in 2024. We also launched the Canapace and in 2024 saw 1.8 million video views on the video that we created for that campaign. And then we were also named the 2024 Reader's Choice Top 10 Beer City in the nation. It's exciting. We ran a campaign on that as well, along with our beer passport as, as an additional campaign with that. And then some website demographics, who's visiting our website? You'll see, you know, 17 social media demographics, who's, who's visiting our pages? Mostly women, it looks like. Top cities, Los Angeles. Lot of local, too. Our social media data. Our paid reach and overview. Versus our organic. You have any questions? Going over. Page 19 is a little bit more on each of our passport programs. We have the Canapace that launched last year, the Discover Downtown Passport, which we've been running for a few years and we're looking to change that around a little bit this year. The Beer Passport, which we have been running for, I think, nine years now and just switched to a digital version a couple of years ago. That's been very successful and a lot of hotel participation on that one as well. Festivities on Fourth is a partnership campaign with the Plaza, the city, downtown Santa Rosa and Railroad Square to get people to shop in downtown Santa Rosa during the holiday season and go visit Santa at the Plaza and we're actually meeting later today to talk about how that's going to look this year. Page 20, some data on our Welcome Center. Up 20, 67% from 2023 in 2024. And up in merch sales as well. We've added a lot of new items in, in the Welcome Center and two years ago did a little refresh on the facility. If you haven't been over there, check it out.
And through the chair, if I may, I know that this concludes the look back summarization of activity historically and we're going to be moving on to the strategic plan moving forward. I would just recommend if we break this into chunks because it is such a large document, perhaps now and then before, as we get to the work plan, just give board members an opportunity and the public an opportunity either to ask questions or a public opportunity to comment. And that level of modification to the agenda is within your purview as the chair.
All right, so then open it up for discussion.
If you would like to, Chair.
Any comments? From the advisory board? Any questions?
No, is this on the look back or the, the plan?
This will be everything just reviewed.
Everything just reviewed, okay. I mean, I, I have some comments. I, and I, it's probably has something to do with the look forward. The, as a suggestion, maybe to throw in the 2019 ADR and occupancy figures to kind of like benchmark where we're trying to get to. Because 2020, you know, it dropped, right? So it's like, be able to have a good, a good benchmark. The, in the marketing, social media marketing, the number of shares, number of comments is a big indicator other than just clicks and likes.
So engagement, right? Engagement.
Would that be engagement?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a, that's a big number to see. Also demographics. So just noting that the top cities for Instagram is Ronard Park, Windsor, Petaluma. And I, I don't know what that percent of numbers is and then the fourth is Sacramento. It's just interesting that these are local, you know, local places as well as Facebook. Los Angeles is number one, but it doesn't say really how much came from Los Angeles. And then we got Ronard Park, Petaluma, and San Francisco is there, which is good. But I mean, regarding overnight stays, of course, Sacramento would be huge.
Yeah.
Even said, you know.
I think, so what I would say to that, Tony, is I think it's pretty natural for the locals to follow. But when we're doing a paid campaign, that, those people aren't, aren't necessarily following us, but they're seeing our ads. So we're, when we're pushing out a paid campaign, we're pushing it out to places that are not local, obviously. So, but those, they're not technically.
How many are going to follow?
Yeah, so follow, I think a lot of people aren't necessarily going to, you know, follow, but they'll see your ad. Does that, does that make sense? So, these are.
We want them to follow, right?
We do, we do, of course, yeah, but.
I mean, I think we have followers like nine hungry.
Well, we had.
This is on the website, right?
On, we had 16,000 for Instagram and, which was the account that was hacked, I guess you could say.
Okay, so the followers is the website, is the website and not necessarily, these are, these are from paid ads.
No, that's just our natural, organic followers. So, yeah, I think a lot of people, you know, locals will still follow just to see what's going on.
Right.
Yeah. But we use those social media accounts to push those paid ads out. So you're not necessarily going to see who's seeing the ads in those followers. Does that make sense?
But it would be better if this was like, you know, Sacramento, San Diego, Los, right?
Of course.
Okay, all right.
But I don't know that it's going to be the highest.
If, if she did a sort of a shot of what one of the ads looked like, you would see the numbers.
I have that on individual.
That's the overall account number. So maybe next year.
Yeah, and I sure could use.
Do highlighting a campaign so you can see how those campaigns are.
And see how they actually perform.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
I can do a few for sure. I've got some for our meeting next week that I can show.
I would say more immediately, you know, the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and through the chair, that also aligns Tony a bit more with also the work plan and laying out more comprehensive collaboration on some of those promotional marketing, advertising efforts between the city and the Chamber. So I think we could bring back more specificity around the success of those advertising programs and the impact. And also just for staff, are you recommending, so going back to the 2019 ADR occupancy numbers and figures, are you recommending that for the future or that we add that to this report before it comes back?
If you see page 10, they're, they're on there.
Page 10?
Yep, page 10 at the top gives the dollar amounts on the site. I mean, we could call it out more, we could make it more, you know, obvious, I guess. But 2000, and these, when I wasn't having trouble. It goes back to 2019.
Oh, I see.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Yeah, they're.
Yeah, we're.
Sonoma County Tourism.
Yeah, but, but, and I'm trying to get more Santa Rosa specific data. I've got, hopefully, getting some of that from Sonoma County Tourism. They've been promising it, so. And I also asked for a piece report for the rest of the year, Sonoma County Tourism for just Santa Rosa, that I've been told I will get this week.
Yeah, it's really hard to tell what the totals are, right? Year 2019 versus 2024.
Well, yeah, on the, on this black and white version, I can't tell either. Yeah.
I have a question.
But we could make it more, I could, I could do that.
I have.
Follow up.
No, that's good. This is good discussion. I've got some more things here. I, I don't, in the past, it doesn't really show like group leads, RFPs generated, how many groups booked, number of room nights booked, number of leads brought in, the conversions of those leads. Let's see, which of course is, that's because it's all based on really kind of room nights, right? Also, the number of events that, the new events, it doesn't really, it doesn't show how many new events were actually captured, how many, what new events were going after. Strategy for getting new events. I just made notes on, you know, just things I was kind of coming up with. Target event types, sports, music festivals, lead development, promoters, how we're, you know, platforms to get these new events. Because that's what's going to kind of bring room. It's like marathon and, you know, these downtown events, this is what's going to drive, these are demand generators, right? So I don't, I don't know what's new. Because I know like Grand Fondo was one that was, it's in the pipe, but we don't know that we're actually going after it. You know what I mean? There's like no, there's like nothing specific as to, you know, what we're going after, what we got that was new. I'm not sure what was, what was new.
Yeah, we can call that out.
Let's see.
And through the, through the chair, if I may, Board Member Pace, if you have a list of those recommendations, if you get them to Raphael, then Raphael and I can work with Visit Santa Rosa in the chamber to look at where we can maybe add some of that data to the report.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, those are good suggestions.
And, and again, through the chair, the report is coming back one final time, too.
I just, if I may now, Todd, you have any?
No, I, I don't know if we would, I, I would be interested to see the leads and the results and stuff like that. I don't know if we necessarily want to put it on this report or not, or just make it a internal thing.
Yeah.
It would definitely be something I would like to see.
Yep, we do include them in the stakeholder slides and so, yeah, we could put them on this for sure going forward or and I, I mean, I'll send you the deck for Tuesday as well.
Hi, Janelle, I had a question about the
Wednesday.
Significant increase in visits to the Visitors Center. Was that due because of expanded hours, additional staff?
I think it's a little bit of both, yeah.
Your merchandise?
Yeah, I think it's a little bit of, yeah, everything. And then, you know, events, you know, that, that happens, that are happening here. Yeah.
Yeah, the number of leads and the number of actual bookings and, you know, what is our goal for next year? That's got to go into 2026. So, I mean, based on what we did, now we've got to, you know, have a goal, right?
Yep. I think we include that in our, in our plan going forward.
Okay.
On the Welcome Center. Also, we were closed for a little bit into 2023 for the renovations. So that's, that, you know, I think there's a lot of little things that are playing, playing into that.
You're good. All right, and the, I'm going to move it on now to public comments. Any public comments?
I see no public comment on this portion of the presentation, Chair.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to now the work plan.
Yes, Chair, we're going to move on to the work plan section and I'm happy to run through that with any input that our partner with Visit Santa Rosa might want to provide along the way. And again, I'll break this up into chunks. I can share that the work plan is substantially more meaty, if you will, a lot more nuts and bolts to the work plan moving forward than what typically has been seen in years past. In years past, it's been pretty much reduced to a one-page document. We've tried to, with input and feedback from this body and from other partners, we've tried to add more content to it. Again, so this was already presented as a rough draft. This is the final draft. I'll go through it and I'll stop after each major section for any input or feedback. So the work plan includes supporting the adopted City of Santa Rosa Economic Development Strategy and Implementation Plan to ensure alignment with tourism-related economic impacts. This is really about bringing, creating connection between this body's efforts and economic development efforts in the city. For next year, conducting an analysis and provide recommendations for improvement of SRTBI processes and procedures for programs with a focus on operational efficiency and strategic alignment. This is about just doing a sort of check-in and review on how the board is operating, how this body is working and if there are any opportunities to make improvements for procedures for the board or for programs that the SRTBI board is, is running. Part of this comes from also an observation that this board is lacking a set of bylaws. And so this would be part of that effort is working together to develop bylaws for the SRTBI board. Also evaluating and recommending improvements for board composition, roles, responsibilities to ensure compliance with Streets and Highways Code for business improvement areas per Section 36622. Again, this goes back to the lack of bylaws and the lack of adoption of either Roberts Rules or Rosenberg's Rules for order for meeting format. Deferring roles and responsibilities not explicitly assigned to SRTBI board as outlined in the Constitution and city ordinance to staff. We could add more clarification here. This is really about deferring clerical and administrative roles and responsibilities. So there are certain things that at a staff level, if we need to make like adjustments to application documents, if we need to make modifications to policies, that that can be handled at a clerical or administrative level and doesn't have to come before the SRTBI board every time, as those are not roles as defined in the Streets and Highways Code. Work with the City Clerk's Office to reduce the number of SRTBI board meetings and convenings to those necessary to fulfill duties under the code and the ordinance. to fulfill duties under the code and the ordinance. We could clarify reduce to change because this is really about creating more meaningful meetings moving forward. I know there've been times where we've met and there's really been no work for the board to do. And so trying to identify how often you need to meet, when you need to meet, and really why we're meeting. Before I move on to the Visit Santa Rosa work plan, any questions, comments, feedback on that portion of the work plan?
Yeah, regarding what you were saying, cutting the number of meetings, I I could kind of see that since I don't, I'm not sure that we're part of determining how much money is allocated to each event that's coming up. Is that that's like a separate committee or something?
Correct, through the chair, that's done by committee and not by the board. The board establishes the budget and the focus areas and priorities. And then the actual awarding of the funds is done at a committee level.
So when did that, when did that change?
I don't have that history, Board Member Pace.
We have two members of the board on.
Two members of the board on the selection panel.
Right. So essentially, it's it's like a like an ad hoc or a subcommittee?
Because that seemed to be in the past, that was a big part of what the meeting was. That's what we met regularly. Because we had full discussion on, you know, how much, how much money was left. Right, remember that? Right, so.
The, at at some point, and again, I don't have that that part of the history, we could look into it. But from what we, Meredith, Raphael, and I understand, at some point, a decision was made to take that into an SRTBI committee versus having the entire board do it because there was there was information that was being discussed and debated and deliberated on in a in a public format concerning some of the applicants. And there was concern about whether, because there were financials included for some of those applicants. So the decision was that this board would set the budget, the priority areas, the strategies for funding. And then it was at the committee level that those recommendations were being made. But the recommendations, but the recommendations do come back to this body.
Right.
So they do come back for for approval ratification. So there is an opportunity that the board could say we don't like how the committee's recommendations, you know, go back and and take another look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. And yeah, the format has shifted over the past year and a half or so.
And we can add that, again, this body's missing bylaws, it's missing rules of order. We can, we can add that functionality, like this is the committee and its role, and we can add all of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Chair, on that section? We've got a few more sections of the work plan to go through.
No.
Okay.
That's one of the comments.
Well, you described as a standing committee subject to Brown Act.
Thank you.
So the question is, is it noticed? If the funding committee, is it being conducted in accordance with the Brown Act currently?
Yeah, we can, we can take that back and look into that.
Hey, by the way, not to belabor, you got a lot to do. Understand what the financial information creates complexities that have to be dealt with. But Brown Act is Brown Act.
And unfortunately, we don't have our CAO here today, so we can take that back and talk with our city attorney team. So we'll make enough of that. Thank you. All right, Chair, moving on to the Visit Santa Rosa portion of the work plan. If you're ready. Janelle, do you want me to go through this? Okay, all right. So the Visit Santa Rosa portion of the SRTBI work plan is as follows. Assess Visit Santa Rosa's current strategic approach to determine areas for improvement and realignment with a new tourism strategic plan. This tourism strategic plan reference there does not exist yet. I'll I'll get into that later. It's another part of the work plan. Continued target marketing and sales efforts to position Santa Rosa as a premier destination. Enhance data-driven visitor market insights to refine marketing and outreach strategies. Strengthen relationships with industry partners, including Visit California, Sonoma County Tourism, Santa Rosa Metro Chamber, and local business associations to maximize Santa Rosa's visibility. We could add to this language such as, because there's certainly, we can't list all of the partners there in that section. Enhance the SRTBI event support program to attract, retrain, and grow tourism generating events. Enhance is somewhat open and ambiguous, and that could be to Board Member Pace's comments earlier, bringing back some specificity around what that looks like and how we're reporting out on the efficacy of events and promoting those events. Continuing engagement in professional tourism and economic development associations to stay informed on industry trends and best practices, collaborating with the city on programs and initiatives related to art, events, sports, entertainment, place making, and economic development. And I think that includes that portion of the work plan, so I'll pause for any questions that anyone may have.
Uh, let's see, let's see, I've got some notes here. So when we say targeted marketing, the continued targeting, marketing, and sales efforts to position Santa Rosa as a premier destination seems to be towards local and and not really specific or, you know, different cities, states, association, you know. It's not real specific because it it seems like the results are sort of local. The enhanced data-driven visitor market insights to define marketing and outreach strategies to what markets specifically. It's not real specific. You know, I mean, yeah, enhance support for what events are coming, you know? It's not real, it's just kind of not real specific. Maybe it does get.
I think bullet point two is more just kind of, you know, continue targeted marketing, which we're already doing, right? Continue doing that, you know. Obviously, we need to always kind of, you know, look at what we're doing and, you know, reassess and, you know, create new strategies. But I think that one's just kind of, you know, continue targeted marketing, which we're already doing. And then enhance data-driven visitor experience. I think that's just, I mean, it could be more specific, but I, you know, we need to gather as more data to to understand, you know, our visitor experience, which is something that we need to do. We always want more data. So it could be just rewritten, you know.
Right, through the through the chair, if we were to add for point number two, after word destination, for out-of-area travelers and tourists?
Yeah, get specific, you know, go south, they, you know, Sacramento, I mean, go specific. Because we're just bringing all the local stuff in. We've got a little local events, but there's no room nights. There's nothing happening, you know? A lot of markets and things, but.
So.
Movies and, you know, but.
Okay.
You know, because I mean, this is the, this has got to be the major push.
Well, I think, sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
So I think, I think bullet point two could say, continue targeted marketing and sales efforts to position Santa Rosa as a premier destination to out to outside visitors. And then the one down, including, yeah, I mean, we could, yeah, add, you know, related to meeting and, yeah.
Like a meeting and an event, like.
Well, and then we talk about enhance the SRTBI event support program to retrain. That one, we could, we should say, we should say new tourism generating events. And that, you know, attract outside visitors as well.
Like three.
Directly, that we should say something like directly impact overnight stays.
Yeah, let's put like a, like something to a goal, right? I'm what we're trying to do.
Well, and I I'm hoping in here, I thought in here we have somewhere that says, you know, we actually need to come up with KPIs, and that's going to be part of that strategic planning process. I'm excited about that.
All right, thank you.
Uh, no, you're fine. This is the entire purpose of this conversation. So we'll go back, and I don't know if, Jack, you're taking notes, or or we could just go back and watch the video. But on the first section, we're going to add clerical and add administrative to the fourth bullet point down. On the last bullet point, we'll change reduce to modify. Because what if something happens and you need to meet more? On the Visit Santa Rosa section, the second and third bullet points, we can change those to add more specificity as as discussed.
Okay, great. Also, the last point, collaborate with the city on programs, initiatives, arts, events, sports. I don't, I don't know that there's a lot of marketing money being spent from Visit Santa Rosa regarding events, even Wednesday Night Market. We had Asia here, Flock of Seagulls, big events. And I don't think there's any, like, you know, this collaborating, but not really doing anything to collaborate to push.
Right.
That is, other than their own events, right? I mean, these are huge events that people in Sacramento, Los Angeles, the Bay need to know that are here, and I don't think there was any. So, I mean, they really need to collaborate instead of just say collaborate.
Well, we could say something, collaborate with the city and local event hosts.
And work together on, through the chair, one thing that that you will see later in the work plan is the city and the chamber want to work together to develop a tourism strategic plan for Santa Rosa. When we get through that process, I think you'll see a lot more specific action items and goals for how the chamber and the city will work together. That tourism strategic plan will also be part of a revision and amendment of the contract between the chamber and the city moving forward. So in the future, that will come back to this body, and I think you'll see a lot more specificity on some of those types of activities.
Good, because that, those dollars need to be spent on that.
Yeah.
These bands, if the Wednesday Night Market, let's just take that organization, is really going to go and keep continuing to do what they do, we need to take advantage of those events that are happening that are like.
Right.
Really.
And 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 if I may, continue, Chair, some some cities and jurisdictions, they spend their TOT money on, you know, ads at Giants games or putting advertising in airports in other states that funnel into our airports. So we're, this is all part of expanding and looking at, rather than just solely using the SRTBI funding just as subsidizing events, how we can actually use that funding strategically for advertising, marketing, promotion, et cetera.
Good, thank you.
And let me just clarify too, that part of the event support funding is destined for marketing. So if the applicant receives X amount.
Yeah.
You're required to spend.
They unfortunately did not apply for SRTBI funding. If they had, they could have used it for all the destination marketing.
Right.
They did apply for community promotions and received it through that, but that was for city services mainly as well. So it depends on if if they're applying, then yes.
They should have, for Wednesday Night Market.
For SRTBI.
Yeah, I don't see, personally, I don't think a lot, a lot of people are coming in from Sacramento or out of.
They work for Flock of Seagulls in Asia. That's, that's all I'm just saying. That tip, you're right. They don't. That's a local event, like the Soco Market, this and that doesn't. But Flock of Seagulls free concert. You know.
Through the chair, I can, I was there at the Flock of Seagulls concert and talked to many people who came in from out of town because Flock of Seagulls were there, including a few who flew in. That's how far away they they came.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I I don't know what number, how many.
They're coming from Asia.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Chair, any other, any other questions or comments on that section?
Is there a list or, we say targeted marking, targeting, target marketing, oh my gosh. Is there a list of what areas or cities we are targeting?
Yeah, we we track our feeder markets and we're looking at who's coming in from where. The city also just obtained Placer AI mobile analytics data, and we can now use that to track. Essentially, it tracks by cell phone usage, where individuals are coming in to the city, where they're coming from, how long they're staying here, and where they're going afterwards. We just got that platform. Our program analyst, Rachel Beer, is just starting to work with Placer AI, which is the name of the company, to develop, it finds like zones, so we can understand those areas a little bit better. Do you mind maybe sharing a little bit more on that?
Sure, absolutely. So part of the data that we can see, not only like Scott was mentioning, is how many people were at an event, but where they're going before they arrive to the event, or where they're coming from and where they're going after. And then if they're staying over the night, for example. And so this will be really good for us to look at some of these large events, and especially those that we're supporting with funding, if they are kind of bringing more people to the city to stay overnight for these overnight stays. So we'll be able to pull a lot of reports on that, including Wednesday Night Market or any of the other events.
And not to get too detailed, if I may continue, Chair, just here's an interesting example of how that data works. We pulled numbers, mobile data on the, was it the Children's Museum?
Children's Museum.
Just to see where the majority of attendees at the museum were coming from and going to immediately before and immediately after their museum visit. And we found through the data that that location was Target. So most attendees were hitting Target and shopping either before they went to the museum or after. That's how detailed we can get with this data. And so hoping to also be able to bring that forward so that we understand more specifically how it's affecting heads and beds. We will literally be able to see who's going to the hotel after the event, who's driving home after the event. Not by individual as identified, but just overall. Yeah, trends.
But will we be, oh, sorry, go ahead.
This is also a good example of how we can better maximize each of our buckets of this SRTBI funding, right, specifically. So we're looking at the city, doing the work to get this kind of specific data. And then we already know, but we can tell you specifically with each of our marketing campaigns, the specific target markets outside of, right, that we're we're driving from a drive traffic market to a direct flight traffic market. We can tell you that now.
Yeah.
But this new data and increased collaboration will let us even maximize that a step further. We have some of that kind of data, but to, right, to enhance it with your data to go, okay, we have this specific campaign that ran these dates, right? And then this was the, right, this, we'll be able to see which campaigns are more successful with another set of data on what we get from our current marketing campaigns.
Yeah, so we're definitely moving into the fun and good direction.
And Tony, I will include.
Discussion regarding work plan matters.
Uh, we we worked halfway through the work plan. We have more work planned to go. But this this section, the Visit Santa Rosa section, we've just concluded.
Except we have marketing and local.
Any public comments? I see now there's none.
Public comment, okay. Do you want to go through marketing and local engagements, or do you want me to, Janelle?
You can go ahead.
Okay. The next sections of the work plan focus on marketing and local engagement. The marketing sections include continue advancing web, online, and social media assets to enhance Santa Rosa's tourism brand. Identify new marketing and advertising opportunities, including partnerships that leverage local, regional, and state-level tourism initiatives. Work collaboratively with, and again, we can add the words like with groups such as the Santa Rosa Chamber, Sonoma County Tourism, Visit California, River Road Square Association, the Downtown Action Organization, Hoteliers, and other industry partners to amplify Santa Rosa's destination appeal. The local engagement section includes expand merchandise, merchandise initiative, merchandise, merchandising initiatives to enhance visitor experience and brand recognition, continue place making and public art collaborations aligned with the Economic Development Strategic Plan, enhance event support and promotion to increase overnight stays and economic impact, and strengthen partnerships with local businesses or business districts to integrate tourism initiatives with small business growth. I can take a pause there, Chair.
You have anything else to add?
You want to add for, if board has no comments, do you want to do a public comment on that section?
All the comments? On that particular section?
Okay, I will move on to the, I'll move on to the next sections. The next sections are tourism, strategic planning, collaboration, events, and art, and that will wrap up the. Oh, no, then there's the business development lodging industry support. I apologize. We really did make this more robust. So the tourism strategic planning collaboration section includes working collaboratively with Santa Rosa Metro Chamber, Visit Santa Rosa, and other partners to facilitate the solicitation, procurement, and completion of a Santa Rosa-specific tourism strategic plan. I mentioned that earlier, the development of a strategic plan specifically related to identifying gaps and leakage for tourism in the market and developing strategies and specific act. And developing strategies and specific acting steps for tourism uh, objectives in Santa Rosa. Ensure that the tourism strategic plan aligns with the Economic Development Strategic Plan and integrates with regional and statewide tourism strategies. And evaluate the effectiveness and strategies of Visit Santa Rosa in conjunction with the new tourism strategic plan. So identify what Visit Santa Rosa is doing or isn't doing to support that plan. The events section includes expand support for community events and public spaces that foster economic activity. Visitor engagement and overnight stays in Santa Rosa. Enhance the City of Santa Rosa Event Support Program prioritizing events that. A align with tourism goals and generate room nights. B contribute to Santa Rosa's cultural and economic vibrancy. C take place during off-peak times to extend the tourism season. Uh, and D showcase Santa Rosa's unique identity, history and local businesses. And then finally, under this section is art. Um, support both temporary and permanent public art installations that enhance Santa Rosa's appeal as a cultural tourism destination. Prioritize art projects and encourage visitors to explore Santa Rosa, including murals, interactive art and installations in high-traffic areas. Collaborate with local artists, cultural organizations and community partners to fund and implement creative place making initiatives. Facilitate public-private partnerships to leverage funding for large-scale tourism-attracting art projects. And align public art initiatives with marketing and tourism efforts, ensuring broad visibility and engagement from visitors. That concludes those sections.
Thank you. Any discussion related to those items?
Um, the final section before we get into um.
You go to the final comment.
Oh, yes.
All the comments.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Um, in terms of collaboration in that section. One of the big elephants in the room of tourism dollar expenditures for a very long time. Has been the role of Sonoma County Tourism. So collaboration with Sonoma County Tourism, we may wish to include in in this section. Um, it's a lot of money spent there. There's often been discussion that Santa Rosa does not get the attention and focus and assistance from Sonoma County Tourism. Uh, that um, be would be ideal and finding ways to obtain more. A a greater integration of Sonoma County Tourism's work with the S R T B I A would be wise. And to the degree dollars that Sonoma County Tourism generates can be allocated directly. Uh, through S R T B I A or to support S R T A B I A initiatives. Uh, I would suggest is worth worth pursuing. There are issues on this subject that are really council-level issues. Uh, but there is a scope, I think, uh, for this body to also deal with.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move on to the last part.
If you're ready, Chair, if there's no other comments. Okay. Um, so I'll wrap us up with the Business Development Lodging Industry Support, and then I could turn it over to um, you, Janelle. Or just sort of wrap up on the report. Okay, wonderful. Uh, so the next section is Business Development and Lodging Industry Support. Uh, this is something that I think has been lacking in terms of specificity and in previous reports. Our work plans, we're really excited to add this this year. Um, explore and identify strategies to increase hotel occupancy beyond events and traditional marketing initiatives. Develop targeted business attraction efforts aimed at industries and organizations that generate consistent business travel. Conferences and corporate retreats in Santa Rosa. Partner with local lodging operators to understand their needs and provide support in attracting new market segments, including group travel. Corporate bookings and midweek stays. Work with our hospitality partners to develop packages and promotions that enhance the visitor experience and incentivize longer stays. Assess opportunities to support infrastructure and amenities that make Santa Rosa more attractive for year-round destination and overnight visitors. Facilitate connections between lodging operators and regional, national travel networks to increase visibility and booking potential. Research and implement best practices from comparable destinations to drive year-round tourism demand, including business travel, education. All tourism and music tourism, and explore and support efforts related to sports tourism, sports and entertainment districts. Sporting activities, youth sports, et cetera, where said activities are driven for tourism. That concludes the um, specific uh, action items for the two thousand twenty-five. Uh, work plan for S R T B I A Board, uh, and the use of its funding. And happy to take any other final questions or comments before I turn it back over to Janelle, who will just sort of. Uh, wrap up the presentation and talk about the year looking ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Adair. Do we have any questions, any other comments?
So you said there is a, you have a, there's a plan that gets specific as to what you're going to do, right?
The um, so if I may, through the chair, um, we'll take the feedback today. We modify the plan, take it to the city manager, C A O. It comes back here one more time. You approve it as a recommendation to go to council. Then council adopts it. Once council adopts it, we will move forward with developing the tourism strategic plan. So so there isn't one yet, but the goal is to to develop.
Okay, so things like familiarization trips to, you know. Create them.
Right.
Bring them in.
This is probably.
Be part of the tourism strategic plan.
Right, yeah. The work plan, if I may, through the chair, the work plan is just adding more specificity around the work of 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 S R T B I. Just for next calendar year. The tourism strategic plan will be likely a three-to-five-year planning document. It will be very extensive. Uh, not four pages like this one. It will probably be a fifty-page document, which will really go into gaps and leakage in the travel industry. Um, where there's potential to recapture market share. It's going to involve a lot of work with hoteliers. Um, other tourism-related industries. Uh, it will be a very comprehensive effort, almost like an economic development strategic planning effort.
Good.
Yeah.
Nice, okay.
That sounds very exciting. Janelle, if you guys want to add.
Yeah, nothing else to add on the annual report and work plan, just that um, thanks for the feedback, especially Tony. Um, I've already taken some notes and a lot of this stuff that um, you've mentioned, I can include in um, and will include. And plan to include in the slides for next Wednesday's um, meeting, um, including the leads. Um, that which we definitely should include in in this document, um, going for it as well. Um, and collaboration with S C T, um, we've been doing a lot more with them, so um, I will include a slide about that. And um, and then the the demographics on our individual campaigns um, will will be in there as well.
And I can just add, Chair.
And some other new projects that we're working on for the rest of the year that include um, you know, uh, our work with Adara. Um, showing the, you know, return on investment on that campaign. I talked a little bit about that at our last meeting, um, our meetings campaign, third night free. Um, and and a new crowd riff influencer program. So a few things um, that are that are new. Um, that will be um, happening the rest of the year. So go into more detail. Um, in the slides, and I can bring those slides to the next meeting as well, so that um, this group can can see that if they're. Not everyone comes to this this individual stakeholder meetings that it's mainly just um, the director of sales for each of the hotels that that attend those meetings.
Thank you. Anything else you want to add?
I could just um, add as a wrap-up, um, before you take public comment on this, Chair, that um. You know, we're still a relatively new and fresh economic development team. Meredith just hit her one-year anniversary. I'm under one year, Rachel's under one year. Um, but we're excited. We're getting to learn the chamber and getting to know each other. Had the opportunity to, I think for the very first time, do a um, collaborative business recruitment trip. With our chamber representatives. So I think you're gonna see a lot more um. Um, robust collaboration moving forward, but coupled with. Sort of cleanup and a reexamination of what we've done in the past. Is it still working, or do we need to pivot and and do something new moving forward? So Janelle's been wonderful to work with, and I'm's been wonderful to work with. Uh, so I I expect that you'll see a lot of. New approaches moving forward with regards to really expanding what these funds can be used for to promote heads and beds in in Santa Rosa.
Thank you. And I'm very delighted to be working with the new team as well. Uh, I hope for public comments, public comments.
Just quickly, it's great to see the the energy being brought to bear on this. It's very important and it's very appreciated. Um, I would suggest that in the spirit of transparency, at some point, even greater granularity about about the budget. Uh, should in some format be be available. I think it's great to know that you're getting in that direction. Probably it might. Uh, public might well be searching, going even beyond what you mentioned. And just again, as a member of the public, I'll I'll send on some suggestions, if I may, on budget formatting, not a ninety-two. Line item budget, that's not appropriate, of course, but something that just provides a distinction between direct and indirect costs, consultant costs. And above all, there's always issue. And this goes to efficiency of marketing dollars. How much money in the end is being spent on the direct product that the public itself interacts with?
Thank you. Alright, well, we're gonna move on to the next item, but just as Scott mentioned, several locations, uh, we will bring the item back and. Exactly, uh, for a special meeting and uh. Do a motion uh, to adopt the plan and move it right along to. Alright, okay, so moving on to item seven. Uh, you understand we might have a couple of uh, department reports, so department reports.
That is right. Um, Chair, we're gonna uh, just go through a few things. We're gonna do an overview of the Art Walk. Uh, talk a little bit about the uh, new application period that's opening up for S R T B I funding. Uh, talk a little bit about the transition between the chamber and the city on managing events in the square. For those three things, I will turn it over to our Art and Culture Coordinator, up soon to be manager, Meredith Knutson. And then Rachel uh, will give us an update on second Sundays, and then I'll just give an update on uh, the ongoing discussions concerning pedestrianization. In the downtown. So I'll turn it over to Meredith.
Thank you, Scott. Um, great to be here today. I always love updates on arts and culture because our department's doing a lot. Um, while it's not utilizing the S R T B I dollars, we're enhancing our community. Um, and and really focused on making this an arts destination, which is part of our Arts Master Plan and Strategic Plan. Um, first, we have the Art Walk. Um, that will be opening um, in September and October downtown. You'll see ten new sculptures. Um, speaking that I've been here a year, it was actually my first meeting, I think, at Art and Public Places Committee. We brought it forward in August. Um, to get this process started. Um, and the committee approved in February ten sculptures uh, to be placed downtown. So right now, I'm working with the artists on contracts. Um, we have three artists from California, one from Colorado, a couple from Oregon, Arizona. And Minnesota. So the call was open to U S-based artists. The theme was urban renewal. So very playful art, innovative art. Um, family-friendly. Um, we do plan to do a lot of arts marketing around this for destination marketing to again, make uh, Santa Rosa. Um, an arts destination because we already have um, a wonderful collection of over eighty-two pieces um, here in the city. Next, um, S R T B I applications will be opening on August first, and that will be closing end of September. So I'll be working with Visit Santa Rosa on those applications. Um, and again, uh, promoting that online, um, not out of the area, right? So I think last year we did um, some Portland, Seattle, L A. I'll have to pull the data. But we do market that um, outside of the Santa Rosa area to generate more buzz about why you'd want to host your event in Santa Rosa. Um, and last but not least, we've been working on the event transition with the chamber. Um, they've done a really great job managing Courthouse Square. Um, and now they've passed that over, porch back over to us at the city. So we've been beginning to manage all of the events on Courthouse Square and permitting that, um, and working with that transition agreement with them. Um, with their assistance on the um, event knowledge, downtown, et cetera. But we did start that uh, July one, that we're managing all the events now. So if you've got any questions about that, you could put them through me or Bryce. And um, I think that's it from from my arts and culture for now. Live at Juilliard does uh, start this Sunday. If you're interested, that's on our website.
Thank you. Any questions, discuss any public comments, oh.
Well, Art House, we have a art uh, display from the Sebastopol. You know, it's called Community Arts Center. So they rotate every three months, new artists work at Hotel E and at uh. At Art House.
Right.
So maybe if all the hotels maybe get together and do, maybe, you know, you'd have all the hotels displaying different art.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, maybe they'd want to be involved in it. It's something to promote, that's for sure.
Thank you. Uh, seeing that there's no more members of the public, I'll move on to the next uh, update.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, thank you and good afternoon. Thanks for having me again. Um, so I'll just briefly chat about our Farmer's Market and our second Sundays program that we started this summer. So the Farmer's Market on Sundays began on May eighteenth. It'll go through the end of Sept- September, excuse me, every Sunday. From ten to two in Courthouse Square. So that has been gaining some traction, um, as people. Uh, understand that it's happening every Sunday. And so um, what I've heard from our organizers for the market is that it's been fairly popular. We have a couple hundred people every week. Um, every second Sunday for June, July, August and September, we've been activating this space with additional partnerships, organizations with. Um, a child and family-friendly focus. So we've had kids' activities. Um, and in this last. Month in July, on the thirteenth, we had Rosie the Trolley offering trolley rides. So we um. Focused on connectivity between Courthouse Square and Railroad Square. So we had Rosie picking up. Um, and offering free rides from Courthouse Square to the museum, stopping or stopping at the museums, stopping at um, the Plaza Mall. And Railroad Square and kind of making the rounds throughout the day. Um, so that's been a really um, a great way to activate the space and connect downtown. Um, and we've had in June, we had approximately eight hundred people throughout the day. July, I haven't had an accurate count. Um, for that event yet, but we did uh, definitely have some traction with Rosie the Trolley as well. We had a hundred and thirteen people ride throughout the day. So those um, events have been really well received. We'll also have August tenth is our next one and September fourteenth will round out the season. Great.
Thank you, Rachel. I'll have to commend you for the great, fantastic job that you're doing.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Uh, like like to open it up for discussion, any questions?
Sunday Market is awesome.
Oh, great.
Great, yeah.
Great. Have you attended?
Oh, yeah, every Sunday.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, the um, the the chicken, the grilled chicken, they do half chicken.
Chicken?
Oh, yeah, it's awesome. The last one was like, it was cut in half. I, there weren't very many vendors there last uh, Sunday. But the one prior, it it uh, I think the the market that was part of it. That stayed on throughout the evening. Well, yeah, Soco Market.
There was an additional event after.
So wow, that the the, you know, Courthouse Square, it was just all all day, adding those new vendors in.
Right.
You know, was uh, you know, too bad it couldn't be like that.
Every Sunday.
Every every Sunday. Let me, if I may ask, and I just might, but it's, do do you you charge for the space for these? Vendors to come in?
So normally for an event, there is a permit fee. Um, it can be around three hundred dollars to rent Courthouse Square. Um, with Farmer's Market, though, um, we have waived those because it's a partnership, because we're adding on second Sunday. So that's a city and Farmer's Market partnership. Um, I don't believe that they charge vendors. We would, we wouldn't charge a vendor, but if it's not our event, then then it's up to the event host to manage that.
Right, right, but the Sunday Market, yeah, Farmer's Market. I mean, we're competing with a lot of other farmer mark, Farmer's Markets, right? The one in.
Sebastopol.
In Sebastopol, we've got Windsor, also the Veterans.
Flea Market Sunday.
Yeah, I don't know, the Flea Market. Living in Santa Barbara, um, their Farmer's Market. That truly a Farmer's Market. If you want to see how it should, you know, be like. As as a goal to try to achieve that. And I don't know how to get the farmers out to really enhance that. That Sunday Market, but boy, what, how how great would that be? There's so much missing. You know, there were people coming from Watsonville selling strawberries and such, but there's got to be so many more vendors that could be part of that, you know. Encourage, maybe take some funding and pay them to go out there or something.
Well, I do think there's there's a couple different events. There was, there's the Farmer's Market, and then there may have been the a second Sundays or an additional event that you may be looking at with that. The Farmer's Market does have quite a bit of.
Yeah, it's been every Sunday.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, there's, I, I go every Sunday, so I, yeah, definitely, I know, but there's always just a couple of people doing. Fresh greens, but there should really be expanded, you know, possible more, you know, if possible.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's great feedback, this organizer, this is the first year we're doing it there. And also when I spoke with the farmer's market organizers, they said that. A lot of the vendors or a lot of the farmers are at other markets on Sundays and also. They do markets throughout the week, so they'll do a Tuesday and a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and a Saturday. And by Sunday, you know, they might not have enough produce or they might not have enough to sell. And so especially this time of the year, summer is really busy, but it's definitely great feedback. And we'll see maybe in the fall, if there's less summer markets, we can increase the vendors. But we actually have a meeting with them next week to check in midseason, so we can bring that up.
I mean, from a hotel standpoint, telling the guests about that, where the guests can go out and support is huge from all the hotels. They really need to know that there is that, that Sunday farmer's market, so it's, it's great event.
Thanks for your feedback.
Thank you, Ms. Beer, thank you, Ms. Knutson, Mr. Dare, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I can just share that we are taking the pedestrianization conversation to city council in September. We're aiming for September ninth. Just to recap on what that is, in April two thousand twenty four. Then Mayor Natalie Rogers asked staff to investigate the impacts of street closures. In particular, along Fourth Street, there was or has been in the past. Some interest by the community in creating more outdoor walkable plaza pedestrian like places in the downtown. Our staff has been involved in a very robust effort, which has included. Door to door conversations with businesses, business meetup forums, town hall meetings, surveys. To residences, to businesses, conversations with business trade association partners. To really understand what those impacts potentially would be if there were more of a. Permanent or semi permanent closure of any part of the streets in the downtown. The results have really come back mixed on that. With there being a lot of interest from the community and from residents, but a lot of concern from, from businesses. On how that would potentially be programmed and what the impacts would be. Something interesting that emerged out of that, which I don't think was necessarily anticipated, but it was a finding. Is that there have been businesses on streets, not Fourth Street, but just outside of the downtown, who are supportive. Of maybe doing something or piloting something along one of their streets. So we will be bringing this just as a discussion item and a study session to city council in September, just to share the results. And our findings, both the positive, the negative and some of the mixed feedback. That's in favor and against the idea of pedestrianization, just to get more. Direction and clarification from how city council wants to move forward on that.
Thank you, any questions, discussion? All the comments, well, I really appreciate all these updates, I think, please continue to bring them back. Since it also adds more to the meeting, so. All right, well, thank you all for participating today, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
Did you call for public comment on department reports, even though there's no members of public? Okay, perfect, yeah, wonderful, thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you.